Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's special Stratford City Council meeting. Joining me in the council chambers, the C A O Joan Thompson and the Deputy Clerk Chris Bantock. At this point in time, I'll turn it over to Clerk Mr. Bantock.
Through your worship, item number two is declarations of pecuniary interest and in the if there are any please state the general nature thereof.
Seeing none.
Through your worship, item number three, there was an addenda circulated prior to today's meeting. So turning to the addenda, there is a motion to add to the special agenda of council dated May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. A resolution under item three point one and a bylaw five point two.
For the addenda tonight is Council Ritzman, Second of Vice Minister Gaffney. All those in favor? Opposed, any? And that's carried.
Through your worship, turning to back to your agenda, item three are the next item is report of committee of the whole in camera session. Item three point one at the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two session just prior to this meeting. Under the municipal Act two thousand and one as amended, a matter concerning the following item was considered. That is, the Canadian Union of Public Employees, Q P, Local thirteen eighty-five Inside Workers Negotiations Update. And that was under the exemption of labor relations or employee negotiations. And turning to your addenda, there is a resolution coming out of that. That the memorandum of settlement with the Canadian Union of Public Employees, Q P, Inside Workers Local thirteen eighty-five. Effective January one, twenty twenty-one to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two be ratified. And that the mayor clerk, chief administrative officer and director of human resources for their respective delegates. Be authorized to sign the memorandum of settlement and the collective agreement where applicable.
All right, moving is Counselor Ingram and Second of Counselor Vazalakos. Discussion? If not all those in favor? Opposed, any? And that's carried.
Through your worship, item four is adjournment to a public meeting under the Planning Act. And there is a motion that the special council meeting adjourned to a public meeting under the Planning Act to hear from members of the public with respect to the following planning matters. Zone change application Z zero two dash twenty-two for three eighty-five West Gore Street. And zone change application Z zero three twenty-two twenty-two for forty-two fifty-three per fine thirty-six to reconvene following the public meeting.
All right, moving, we adjourn purpose of public meeting, Counselor Ingram and Counselor Clifford. All those in favor? Opposed, any? And that's carried. I will call the public meeting to order and the purpose of this meeting is to give the council and public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to zone change applications and zero two. Dash two-two, the application affects property with municipal address of three eight-five West Gore Street Stratford. The order procedure for this meeting is as follows, staff will present the application. The applicant or their agent will then make a presentation. Council may ask questions for the purposes of clarifying the application, but are cautioned not to make comments or take a position on the application of this public meeting. Com registered delegations be asked for their presentations, comments and questions. Questions and comments from the Q and A section of the webinar will be read in to the record by clerk's office staff member. And the public is advised that a person has not provided counsel with oral submissions at a public meeting. Or written submissions before a bylaws adopted or decision is made, the Ontario Land Tribunal has the power to dismiss an appeal. Public has also advised that comments expressed and written material presented are a matter of public record for full disclosure. Are there any questions as to this order of procedure? Seeing none will now proceed with the meeting and I'd ask Jeff Bannon, city planner, to please present the application. Mr. Bannon.
Thank you, your worship. I need to have my share screen enabled in order to put up the PowerPoint presentation.
Through your worship, you get that a try now, Jeff.
I believe it's working now. Everyone can see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. The zone change application Z zero two dash twenty-two was submitted by Jordan Shelby Hale on behalf of Hale Housing Incorporated. Sorry, I'm just trying to get to click through. Here we go. The zone change amendment is proposed to rezone the lands from a residential second density R two bracket one zone to residential third density. Specific R three zone to allow the existing dwelling to be converted to a quadruplex dwelling with a minimum front yard depth of five point four meters. A minimum corner lot furniture of twenty meters for a quadruplex dwelling. A minimum side yard width of one point two meters for a quadruplex. And a minimum rear yard setback to a parking area of one point one meters. A planning justification report, conceptual site plan, building elevations. And a functional servicing letter were were all submitted in support of the application. The subject lands are located on the southeast corner of West Gore Street and McCulloch Street, having an area of approximately eight hundred and ninety square meters. And the surrounding land uses next to or adjacent to the property are all single detached dwellings. The property is designated residential area in the official plan. And that designation allows for a range of residential uses, including triplex, townhouse dwellings and low-rise apartments. In that residential R two bracket one zone, the permitted land uses are single detached dwelling. Semi-detached duplex converted in triplex dwellings. And the rezoning of the lands to a site specific R three special zone would allow for the existing dwelling to be converted into that quadruplex dwelling. It circulated the application to various agencies and departments. Building services, fire department have no concerns with the application. Canada Post has provided information on where the central mailbox is would be located or centralized lockbox assembly. And engineering services have no objection to the application and they have noted that a one point four four meter. Road widening from the West Core furnish would be required in the future. As for the public comments, the notice was sent out to ninety-seven budding property owners on in April. And the notice was included in the town crier publication on April fifteenth. Three responses were received prior to the planning report being finalized and then three additional responses were received after. The report was completed. The residents have expressed concerns with increased traffic and on-street parking. A concern with the potential damage to an adjacent fence, drainage, noise, privacy, snow removal. Changes to the character of the neighborhood, the likelihood of future requests to change the zoning of other properties within the neighborhood. The potential for a decrease in property values and a lack of amenity area on the subject property. Any other agency or public comments received after the public meeting will be provided to the planning heritage committee in a future report. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. At this point in time, what I do is I maybe Counselor Ingram, you see your hand?
Thank you. Yes, I have I have a couple of questions for Mr. Bannon, if I may. Um, in the zoning by law, the minimum rear yard setback doesn't differentiate between a parking area or a property line, does it?
For the dwelling itself, it doesn't differentiate, but there is a section in the updated zoning by law, which is now in effect. That requires a minimum rear yard setback to a parking area of one point five meters. And they can only provide her they're willing to provide one point one meters.
And can you define a parking area for me, please?
Okay, I'll give you the definition of the bylaw here. So parking areas area provided for the parking of motor vehicles and includes any related parking aisles and parking spaces. It includes private garage or parking area located within a building or a structure, but does not include any part of the street or lane or the driveway.
And was the intent of that definition for low-rise residential or was it? Was it for higher density residential or does it matter?
I don't think it matters. It is intended for all types of land uses. We tend to see parking areas being provided for anything that's four or more units because then you you get into more parking spaces that are typically required. If it's three units or less than often, it's easier to provide the parking on the property. So it it does come into play with the higher density uses, but it is intended to be used for for any land use.
Thank you.
All right, any other member of council have a question this time? See if I can see them all there. Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, I I was gonna ask for planning on the parking. Is there adequate parking or quad there like on the it's 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 hard to tell on the drawing there for that is with parking.
Through your worship, yes, they are providing adequate parking to provide off-street parking. They require four parking spaces and they're able to provide that on the property.
Any other questions for members of council this time? Counselor Henderson.
I have a question and I'm not sure if you quite answered or not, but dealing with the parking. So you can you own property and not live there? You rent it out? And can you store your vehicles there? Or do you actually have to live there to be able to do that?
Through your worship, so intention of the zoning bylaws provide parking for the the subject land. So for the private property, if you live there, that's where your parking space would be. Located. We do have provisions in the zoning by law that if they wanted to go through the process to have parking located off off the site. Then they could do that. So you could provide parking on another property, but it has to be recognized through the zoning by law.
So we had, you know, some letters from people that were complaining about them storing their their truck and different things there. So. Will you look into that to see if that is allowed, if they actually applied for that? And I'm actually not sure if the person even lives there, but I just that was one of the concerns from a neighbor.
Through your worship, yeah, certainly we can look into to the question. Our understanding right now is that it's being used for the residents that are on the property. It's it's something that by law could look at, but it's going to be difficult for them to to. Prove who's actually storing vehicles there licensed and they have to go through that process where they can track to see who owns the the vehicles. And then find out who the tenants are inside. So it's not a quick answer, but I'm sure we can have by law look into that.
Okay, thank you very much. That'd be great.
All right, is there any other questions at this time? Seeing none will then go to the presentation, the applicant, Mr. Hale, I believe, is on the line and he will be presenting his application. So.
Can we take the presentation down so we can see it? Oh, thanks.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Awesome. Thanks. Thank you for all the questions and Jeff for that presentation. I appreciate it. So you guys did see the our proposed concept. So I would just like to note that we have hired. Crit engineering to go through the proper site plan process. And she they've also worked with Caroline Baker, just to make sure that we do have the adequate parking, which was already discussed. And our consultant at Crit Engineering is very aware of all of the points to keep in mind to. Not just not to disturb the neighborhood. So with that being the snow. We need area for snow storage and area for amenities. Currently, there is actually two driveways on site. One, there's actually an area for about four to six vehicles that would be directly off of McCulloch Street and in front of the proposed vestibule. On the plan. And then there's another driveway that goes to the existing garage and that's where the the new driveway is proposed, where we have enough parking. There. So that front area in front of the vestibule can become an amenity area as well as behind the vestibule as well as we have. All the frontage on West Gore for for amenities. So that kind of takes care of that note. And then. I like the question about the parking with the vehicles. That is, I don't, I know, Jeff, you said that would take some time to. To figure out whose vehicles those were like those are our work vehicles. So I mean, if there's something that we have to apply for to get approval to park there, we can absolutely do that. And then as far as privacy, there are those two adjacent fences between our neighboring properties. And I believe they're both eight feet tall and full privacy. I don't anticipate any. Any issues with harming those fences during construction. And then the drainage, public comment, again, that will be taken care of with the design. That we have to do as far as I'm I'm told, we have to have a. A water removal system entire rate in the sewer. So that should take care of that. The other public comment with decrease in property value, I think that's, I think, taking down the existing garage. That is very, very old and putting up a new. Building attached to the existing and it's actually going to reflect the existing. So we're not trying to do anything crazy to make it stick out like a sore thumb. I think that's only going to help the the neighborhood. Look better. So I don't think I'm just trying to address these public comments as well as the counselors comments. I don't all the increased traffic on the on-street. With on-street parking, I do know that that's an issue. One of our tenants is community living. And we do work with them closely. They're very good tenants. We love to continue to have a good relationship with them and what that is, is their staff who is there supporting. The tenant that we have living there, they tend to park on the road so that they can move their staff vehicle in and out of the driveway. However, with the added parking. It was the the new design, I think that will that'll take care of that as well as I talked to community living about relocating some of their staff vehicles. Because I did go and talk to all all of our close neighbors before. This circulation went out and and I I kind of gathered their comments. Directly from them, and I know that was one of the main concerns. So yeah, other than that, I think that's all I need. I'm looking to comment on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hale. Is there any questions from members of council for Mr. Hale? Counselor Ritzman?
Yeah, and thank you through it through the mayor. A question you you mentioned about amenities with regards to regular garbage pickup switch. Unit would be responsible for their own garbage and setting it out?
Uh, as of now, I don't have any plans. For what would happen if if we were approved and did add on the additional two units, but currently each tenant is required to take their own garbage to the side of the road.
So so if I may, just in a follow-up, so there's no plans for a like a dumpster or any of that nature?
I don't have any plans to do that.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other questions for Mr. Hale? All right, seeing none. Is there any questions from council for staff at this time? Mr. Bantock, are there any registered delegations?
Through your worship, we have three registered delegations. The first being Susan Molenis and we will bring Susan into the meeting now.
Thank you.
Thank you, your worship, Mayor Dan Matheson, city councillors and city staff. I'm speaking actually on behalf of myself, but also a number of neighbors that either do not have the capacity as they're older and cannot do Zoom meetings. Or they're not available, including Roger Cale, who asked that I could bring up some issues as well. So we have had a neighborhood meeting and discussed this area because that block is extremely congested now with two units on it. You can't pull around that corner any day of the week without multiple cars, trucks. I have sent pictures. Chris has six pictures that we've just taken recently. If you want to put up pictures, Chris, number one. That's blocking twelve McCullough driveway. This past week, so that's number one. Number two, Chris, please. Again, this is during the week when the workers are on site. You can see the driveway sit empty. And unfortunately, Mr. Hale has his personal recreational vehicle plus his work trailer sitting in the second driveway at the moment, which will be the main driveway. So you can see how difficult it would be to get a fire truck or a garbage truck or any kind of services through this corner currently. And this has been going on like this for the last fifteen years, I would say that I've been in the neighborhood. And so often when the garbage truck comes, he sits on the horn and blows the horn because he's furious that he can't get through. When a courier truck comes, a few weeks ago, a fire truck came to one of the local neighbors and had to park on West Gore Street. So this is a big issue with this tiny little corner and you can't see from the photo. But the mailboxes for Canada Post are right in front of that picture and there are sixty homes serviced right there in that tiny little block of five driveways. Picture number three, please, Chris. This is the end again of twelve McCullough. And the neighboring property with vehicles parked at the end of the driveway, which they could be calling the police and actually having the vehicles removed, but it's a constant problem. Picture number four, please, Chris.
Through your worship, Susan and I was actually only in receipt of three photos. But if you want to try resending them, we could circulate them at following the meeting if you'd like.
It's okay, I can improvise with that and give you a picture from what those pictures that I sent are every single day in this neighborhood. And so the other pictures I sent were actually the trailers that are parked on the property because. That property's never had trailers parked in that driveway and all of a sudden it's become a parking spot for commercial business trailers. And for recreational vehicles. This is mainly a low density being bungalow neighborhood. Ninety-six percent of the homes here are single-family residents. That particular unit is one of the only duplex units within about four blocks of this particular neighborhood. And so our concern is you're now doubling that mess and that space on that corner and adding a lot more traffic. Down farther on McCullough, there are another sixty boxes which service Wood Street and down at the end of McCullough are another sixty boxes which service Eastern Street. So with Canada Post traffic coming in and out of that street all the time, there is a lot of local traffic. That is always parked on the side of the road to pick up their mail. It's quite dodgy as it is. In the block between Easton and Wood Street, there is no sidewalk and there are schools in the neighborhood. So we have a lot of children going to Hamlet and Saint Joseph's Schools, walking on the road as well. And now you're going to add more traffic again to that site. Also wanted to point out from the neighbors' concerns that a lot of people from West Gore park on McCullough because there's no parking on Saint Vincent, Birmingham. What else? John Street, it's a tiny little block where if anyone has company, they park on McCullough and they walk. A lot of people park on McCullough and walk to the hospital from there as well to save on the parking fees. So it looks like a quiet little street and a great place to add housing. And as you all know, I'm an advocate and a voice for housing. But I'm also an advocate and a voice for the rights of the neighbors that that live in that that area when you add more congestion and more traffic to the area. We asked questions about how many units, how many bedrooms, how many bathrooms? That's key. Because we know right now there's a huge problem with people using these for Airbnb and other sources. Where you might have three units and say six people in that unit. So that's important too, is how many people are going to be living on this site? How many people are we going to have? The other thing is that keep in mind, even though we're looking at increasing info and we all know we need housing, this is not affordable housing. These units are likely going to rent for seventeen hundred or eighteen hundred a month. So this is not to be confused with what we actually need right now in affordable housing. This is definitely for-profit construction to add to the coffers of the landlord. And that being said, that's okay, but you can't come into a neighborhood where you have mainly all senior senior citizens. Ninety-six percent of the people here are single, single-family homeowners and bought in this area for that reason. And the other part of that as well is that our property values will be affected if we have a fourplex and if it does turn into student student housing. Then or if it does turn into some kind of multi-people dwelling without permission of the neighbors, you are. Coming into a residential one. So does that set the precedent for the whole city? All the lots in our neighborhood are sixty-six by one thirty-two. So does that mean every single lot in our neighborhood could be taken down and we can put a fourplex on? Because I'm going to do that then because I could use the money and I'd like to retire. So you know, we all would like to make more money in real estate, in our real estate. And that doesn't mean that that's the right spot to make money in our neighborhood. I think that's it for what I have to say. I thank you for your time and I do hope that you keep in mind the neighbors and like I said, a lot of them are seniors and could not come to a Zoom meeting. And are very upset that they've lived here most of their lives and now they're going to have this massive tower and building that doesn't suit the neighborhood overlooking their yards.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mullen Hughes. Is there any questions? But thank you. We'll go to the second presentation and Mr. Bantock.
Through your worship, the next delegate is Sharon McTavish. We'll bring Sharon into the meeting now.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I just wanted to say that Susan actually put a lot of stuff in there for me and I was just wondering if we're going to change this to an R three zone. How far does this reach? Does this mean that everybody can do this into the city? Is this going to be Stratford-wide that you can just infill with all of these big lands? And because if I had known that, I wouldn't have bought it in in here. I would have stayed into a move somewhere else. And I also heard that there may be balconies on this. So if there's going to be balconies, does that mean that's going to go into my land? I live right next door to three eighty-five. I live at three seventy-five. So that means that they're going to be looking directly into my backyard, which leaves me with absolutely no privacy whatsoever. And that is very disconcerting and the parking issues is also another thing because right now. There isn't any parking there. Everybody's parking on the street and it is hard to turn. And the ambulances and fire trucks and even the garbage trucks can't get up and down. You see them backing up trying to get through. And I know that there was not a fence right now all the way down by the side of our property, but I know in between our property, we own twelve feet, they would have four feet. That would leave like a little alleyway shortcut right through to the property, which means that would there would be a lot of noise going up and down in between the homes. Which I really don't want. And I'm thinking if there's going to be four people there, you're going to have balconies, there's going to be a lot of parties. And it's just going to be a noise factor for us. This is our retirement home. I was kind of hoping that maybe it would stay into a single-family home. Which is why we bought here because these were put in the fifties. And I think it would just destroy the whole character of this neighborhood. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McTavish. Is there any questions for members of council for Ms. McTavish? The thing I'd point out is Ms. McTavish, every property owner in the city, all over eleven thousand of them have to write at any time to apply for their rezoning of their property. So I just want you to know that when you ask if it can happen in any neighborhood, it's an independent right of any property owner to ask at any time for their rezoning of their property. All right, there's no questions for Ms. McTavish. Mr. Bantock, we would take the third presentation this time.
Through your worship, our final delegate is Mark Flanagan and we'll bring Mark into the meeting now. Hi, Mark, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm good. Just got you now. There we go. I'm a construction person by trade from way back and and I understand growth and. and I understand growth and construction people and renovations and new homes and things like that. So I I I can see that, but a little bit of what Sharon said and, uh, it said about the zoning area, you know, when we had our meeting there the other day. Uh, with what I would say is a chip shot from the house there. You know, there's four properties that are double allotted. And then I you just pointed something out that everybody can apply for rezoning, but you know, there's four homes that are double allotted that can move into a fourplex or greater uh, within a, within a 30-second walk of that particular property. So now you're looking at, you know, your water lines, your sewer lines and things like that. And I just feel once one gets, one gets passed and it'll be a lot easier for the next one to get passed and and the next one to get passed. But there's four properties within, you know, a two, 10-second walk from that property to, uh, to, to quite a few more dwellings possibly going up. So now you are changing, you know, this residential area into something different, you know, when you move into a subdivision, you're purchasing there, you understand that, you know, what homes are going to go in. This area was kind of established. And I guess I'm a construction person. I can understand growth, but uh, changing that bylaw might be a little bit different. Okay. So I'd comment on that. And then as, uh, they said earlier, the the mailboxes are are a major issue. And getting down McCullough Street, you know, I only drive a car, but you know, uh, we've heard the horns, we've heard the honking, uh, the emergency services can't get down. Um, this area is. I wouldn't say there's that many younger kids or more older kids. And, uh, um, that's my two cents. Okay. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Flannin? Well, thanks, Mark. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll ask a member of this clerk's offices. Are any comments within the public record on the chat box?
Through your worship, there are no questions in the question and answer at this time.
Okay. Are there any questions further from council? Counselor Henderson?
Sorry, um, I I noticed, um, when they were showing the pictures that the trailer was parked on the grass. Now, my understanding is the bylaw is you can only park a trailer on a driveway. You're not allowed to park it on the grass. And the second thing I have is after seeing those extra pictures of parking. If somebody applies to have a permit to park their work vehicles at a place that is in the residence, can we refuse that?
Mr. Bantock or Mr. Ben, and I guess probably the most appropriate.
Through your worship, yes, you have the option of refusing that application. It'd be dealt with the same way as any other zone change, but they'd have to ask permission to, um, park on, to allow parking on a property that is not on their own land, right, to allow something in the neighborhood to park on. Um, there are provisions in the zoning by law that regulate the number of commercial vehicles that are allowed. You're only allowed to have one and it has to be under six meters in length. Um, so we can have discussions with applicant after the public meeting to get a better understanding of uh, the vehicles that are on the the property and possibly educate and uh, see what is going to happen once this, uh, if this application proceeds and um, if it does get approved, where are those vehicles going to be located? Because in all likelihood, they're not going to be able to fit on within that parking lot that they're proposing.
Well, and I had concerns too about another thing is that when I hear that fire trucks, ambulances and the garbage truck except for have trouble getting down. Is that street a street that we could make parking only on one side? Have someone look at that to see if, um, it should be parking on one side. And part of that question also is I noticed that they, when they were parking, they were parking across from driveways. Is that road actually wide enough that you can actually do that? Do we know? You know, I know certain roads that they're wide enough you can park across from driveways, but other times if the road's too narrow, you can't. And we've actually had to put no parking signs up on different streets because of that. I just think there's more going on here than I originally thought. Do we know if if we can, uh, if you can park across from a driveway on that street?
Counselor Henderson, you can't park across from a driveway on any street, and the people that can actually enforce that are the police.
Really? Interesting. Hmm. That's good to know. Thank you.
Counselor Gaffney.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, through you, uh, I need, I I was just wondering. I'm getting the impression that there's businesses being run on uh, one of these places or both these like like we're talking about work trucks and stuff. So is there a business being run out of uh, residential location? And that may be okay.
Mr. Bannon, do you have any answer with regard to that?
Through your worship, we're not aware of a business being operated, um, out of that location. Um, the applicant is in the meeting, so we can ask that question of him. Um, but at the same time, you're only allowed to have one commercial vehicle associated with that, with the dwelling that's allowed on the property. So i- if it's become a meeting point where employees are gathering, um, that's not permitted in the zoning by law. And basically there are restrictions on that, um, commercial vehicle size. And looking at the pictures that were posted, um, or that were brought forward by one of the the neighbors, those vehicles are larger than what's allowed in the zoning by law.
Thank you. Anything further? There are three comments in the chat box, Mr. Bantock.
Through your worship, thank you. The first comment, uh, from Susan Moleness reads, we need to know how many bedrooms and baths in each unit. The second comment, uh, also from Susan is there are too many driveways already. And the final comment, uh, from Susan is reads, Canada Post is already there.
Thank you. All right. Is there anything further from members of council? All right. Uh, Mr. Hale, do you have anything you'd like to add in closing?
Yes. Um. I've just, we just, um, took ownership of this property in October. Um, so a lot of the neighbors have been there a lot longer than we have. Um, so as we learn what's going on in the neighborhood, we're like, we're always, we're, we're good neighbors. We don't want to make anyone upset. That's why I personally knocked on their doors and tried to discuss any of the concerns they might have, um, beforehand. And and I agree with with them on the fact that parking on that road is an issue. I actually that one photo that Susan sent with the black van and the orange, uh, midsize vehicle, my truck was in the driveway. Um, I was there just doing a repair at one of the tenants, so it doesn't, my vehicle doesn't stay there um, permanently, but it was just parked there because I didn't want to park on the road. Anyways, I took the same picture, Susan, from my truck driver seat because it's a concern for me as well. It's not, I don't, I did, I agree that, um, that shouldn't be the case. Um, and that moment that I took that photo, I sent it to our tenant and said, like, we need to figure this out. Um, so I just want everyone to be aware of that, like, it is a concern of mine, even as a landlord, let alone, you know, this application. Um, I I do want to take care of that, and we've only owned it since October, and I know that it's been an issue since the the basement tenants have been there for 15 years. So, um, that's, yeah, that's really the only comment I wanted to make.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hale. All right. City Council intends to consider this application in a future planning and heritage committee meeting where members of council will have an opportunity for full discussion of the application after reviewing comments received from the public at this time. If anyone would like to receive further notice of this meeting of this application, please email clerks at stratford.ca. A video of this meeting will be posted to the city's website, and this public meeting is adjourned. All right, we'll go to our second public meeting, Mr. Bantock. And this public meeting is for the purpose is to give council and the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to zone change application Z zero three dash two two. The application affects the property to municipal address of fifty, forty-two, fifty-three, Perth Line thirty-six in the city of Stratford. The order procedure for this meeting is as follows. Staff will present the application. The applicant or their agent will then make a presentation. Council may ask questions for the purposes of clarifying the application, but are cautioned not to make comments or take position on the application at this meeting. Registered delegations, we ask for their presentations, comments and questions. Questions and comments from the Q and A section of the webinar will be read by clerk's uh, office staff member. The public is advised that if a person is not provided counsel with oral submissions at a public meeting or written submissions before a bylaws adopted or decision is made, the Ontario Land Tribunal has the power to dismiss an appeal. The public is also advised the comments expressed and material presented are a matter of public record for full disclosure. Are there any questions as to this order procedure? Seeing none, we'll now proceed with the meeting, and I'd invite Jeff Bannon, the staff planner, to please make a presentation of the application.
Thank you, Your Worship. Zone change application Z zero three dash twenty-two was submitted by Trevor McNeil from MTA on behalf of Marcore Farms Limited and CNM Farms Corporation. Zone change amendment is to rezone the lands from an agricultural zone to an agricultural special zone to prohibit dwelling units and to allow the two accessory farm storage structures to be located in the existing location. All having a lot frontage of one hundred and sixty-three meters and a lot area of thirty-seven point five hectares on the lands to retain and to permit a singly detached dwelling on a lot with a minimum lot area of just over 5,000 square meters and a minimum lot frontage of nine point zero two meters on the lands that are intended to be severed. There is zoning is necessary in order to satisfy the conditions of a provisional consent that was approved in December of last year. A severance sketch was also submitted in support of the application. Subject lands are located on the south side of Perth Line thirty-six between the city limits and Alone Avenue, and they have an area of approximately thirty-eight hectares. The surrounding land, land uses are all agricultural. The subject property is designated agricultural area in the official plan. The designation permits a full range of non-intensive agricultural uses such as cash crop farming, market gardening, specialty crops, nurseries, farm dwellings and structures, on-farm diversified uses, agricultural related uses and home occupations. The lands are zoned agricultural zone, and it permits uses that include an agricultural use, conservation, forestry, home occupation and a wayside pit. The zone also recognize, recognizes several existing land uses. And as mentioned, the subject lands received provisional consent approval from the Committee of Adjustment last December. And again, that applicant is required to zone the subject land in order to complete that severance. For circulation comments, we've received comments back from building services, the fire department in Canada Post, all of which have no concerns. The notice was sent out to 12 Budden property owners in April and included in the town crier, and no responses have been received to date. Any agency or public comments received after the meeting will be provided to the planning heritage committee and a future report. And again, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. For Mr. Bannon this time from members of council? All right, I'm seeing none. Uh, representing the applicant is Trevor McNeil. Mr. McNeil, are you with us?
Through your worship, we are just bringing Mr. McNeil into the meeting now.
Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
Okay, a few seconds, but I'm here now. So yeah, just as Jeff has said, this is basically a surplus farmhouse severance that was approved through the Committee of Adjustment. And of course, one of the conditions, which is with all the farmhouse surplus farmhouse severances, is to follow up with a zoning amendment to allow the recognized existing house and sheds to be used for storage and not to allow any other dwellings on the remaining farmland. So the application is pretty straightforward. There's been some other ones done um, within the city at the west end of town there, one done by Walsh on Highway Eight. Another one on Alone Ave. So, um, really, it's pretty straightforward. I can answer any questions that council may have.
Any questions from members of council from Mr. McNeil? All right, seeing none. Are there any presentations, registered delegations, Mr. Bantock?
Through your worship, we do not have any registered delegations.
Is there anything in the chat box?
Through your worship, at this time, there is no, there are no questions in the question and answer.
All right. If there's no other questions from members of council, Mr. McNeil, on behalf of the applicant, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, no, everything's good in our end. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. City Council intends to consider this application at a future planning and heritage committee meeting where members of council will have an opportunity for full discussion of the presentation after reviewing comments received from the public at this time. If anyone would like to receive further notice with regard to this application, please email clerks at stratford.ca. A video of this meeting will be posted to the city's website, and this public meeting is adjourned, and council will reconvene, Mr. Bantock.
Through your worship, item number five is reading up the bylaws. Uh, there are two bylaws listed, item five point one being the confirmatory bylaw and item bylaw five point two. Turning to your addenda is the execution of memorandum of settlement and collective agreement with the Canadian Union of Public Employees, Local thirteen eighty-five. And both these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council president.
Moving that to be taken collectively is Counselor Ingram and Counselor Vazalakos. All those in favor? Post many. I'll declare that unanimous. We'll go to first and second reading of bylaws five, one and three, five, one and five, two. Counselor Bunting and Counselor Clifford moving in second. The bylaws five, one and five, two be read a first and second time. All those in favor? Post many, that's carried. In the third and final reading, Counselor Gaffney, Counselor Henderson moving that bylaws five, one and five, two be read a third and final time. All those in favor? Post many, and that's carried. A motion to adjourn this evening's proceedings. Counselor Ingram and Counselor Vazalakos. All those in favor? Post many, and that's carried. Thank you.